Hello, good evening and thanks for tuning in to Conversations with Cheryl Weston. Our program tonight, hey, is going to be devoted to the city council agenda for September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. So let's get right into it. Okay. Here we go. Uh, beginning with, they have the usual call to order and so forth, which is, we all know about that. Um, and then I just want to remind everyone, you can have this uh agenda. It is online and you can also, right here where they tell you, you can sign up for it so that you can receive the agenda. Um, as it is published. So let's move right into, we've got a tax levy. Um, as I always say, you know, yep, it's going to happen. Uh, there's not much on the agenda that I could see today, this week, that will be discussed too much from the public hearings. Um, most of it will all slide through and we all know what the end results is going to be. Um, but let's look at item seven, or I'm sorry, item six, right here is the public hearing and the vote today. And this is a resolution in regards to the current property tax request for twenty twenty five to be a different amount than the property tax request for twenty twenty four. And um, says here, you know, it's using an assumed collection factor of ninety nine point fifty percent. Um, as we go on down through here, for the purposes follows forty three point ninety nine for twenty twenty five, including, and then they give you the breakdown of how they got to the forty three ninety nine four. Um, it will fly through. There may be a few people who will come and say something, but I would say it, it's still gonna fly. Um, moving on to seven and eight is just liquor license request. And then um, there's several items that are coming from uh planning board attachments. Um, item nine, ten, nothing big. Number eleven, nothing big. Um, number twelve, still nothing big. We move along. All of these here probably will keep right on moving through. They're just the usual. Um, now you know, I always am a little biased towards pointing out things that are in for my district, District Two, North Omaha. But these others, you know, I'm just trying to bring this out so that people who live in these other areas, you are not immune and you know what they say. You keep your eyes closed, you keep your head down in the sand. You don't pay attention when it's happening to other people. Guess what, folks? It will come around because it will be happening to you. And that's what's happening in Omaha. Um, here we go to item twenty three. Another one, um, that's out at four oh eight William Street. Hmm. And let's see, we've got twelve thirty one, South Fifteenth Street, Forty Fifth and H, not too much. Hmm. And here's something I just want to make a note and remind people again. Anytime you see this item twenty five, or I'm sorry, that says Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, that's like a done deal, just about. Unless there's something that is so bad and it hasn't, um, whom's, whom's ever making the, whoever is making the request, they have not fulfilled what their P U R plan unit development was. And then that's where the city planning comes in and they can say, oh, our recommendation is not to approve. But these, I don't see where anything's gonna happen. I could be wrong. Public hearing vote, dot it up. Nope. Um, let's see, thirty one? Nope, 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 nope. Now we get into the slide through items. This is why I like to say the sneaky, sneaky pinky items, consent agendas. And this is a lot of times where they will throw things in that nobody's gonna pay any attention to. And you know, it's like, why do you have to even do that? Because you know you're, which way you're gonna vote. And if the mayor said it, this is what she wants, you're not gonna turn that down. Um, because you'll get your hand slapped and nine times out of ten, if she vetoes it, you're not gonna be able, city council member's not gonna be able to write her veto. Um, so let's see, uh, these, if there's anything you're sneaking through. Thirty four, okay, we've got a um, item thirty six, another tax increment financing. And there is a great article and we probably, maybe I'll bring that up on one of my next shows. Um, that was written, um, it's there from the Nebraska Examiner, I think it is, that did this, or Flatwater Press. But it's about some of the TIF increment financing and how that's really gone a screw. Um, there's holy name, item thirty six, Fortieth and Lake Street, which is proposed to construct thirteen single family homes on the project site. Um, to use up, let's see, five hundred and thirty eight thousand, five hundred and nine, ninety, nineteen dollars. Okay, first reading was twen- tenth, uh, public hearing, the seventeen, so today's just an automatic vote. That's the reason why they're throwing it here because unless somebody steps forth and wants to pull this, pull an item out of the consent agenda, it's just an automatic. All those items that are in there will go forth. Now here is an interesting one. Not that it's not, it's gonna be turned out, it's, it's gonna pass. But last week, um, at the public hearing, there was some discussion on item thirty nine. Um, and this is the old uh Crossroads Mall. And there was some heated arguments uh on the street parking facility located seventy fourth Street Dodge, um, at Omaha, at that real property site. The city acquisition of real property within the sale. Look at that. Look at that, will you? In tax increment financing proceeds. The requirement of a minimum investment in public infrastructure by Woodbury. And there you go. So this, they had some conversation last week at the public hearing. And then you can have the attachment, if you click into there, they'll give you all this feedback. But like I say, I can't see this not passing and that was one of the reasons why it's probably thrown into um the consent agenda. Here is um, another item that's kind of related. Now, forty, which is often related to, is part of like this thirty nine, but I want to pull up this communication and opposition. And um, people, like I say, whenever you write, always see that you, make sure that you do send to um Elizabeth Butler, who is the city of Omaha, uh, manager, um, or clerk right there. But this is from Rick Fulton, who is Mayor Stothard's nemesis. I tell you, they have some emails going back and forth. I enjoy watching it. Anyway, um, what Rick said is, dear Omaha City Council, I urge, and I'm gonna see if I can make this so little bigger. There you go. I urge a no vote on the ordinance for another redevelopment agreement with the shady LLC with the city of Omaha mirrored in a TIF scandal, according to Nebraska Auditor Foley. And that's that article that I want to bring up and that's gonna be one special program. Anyway, to um, it would seem really dumb to commit another one hundred million dollars for the crossroads. Apparently, the council, along with the mayor, thinks state law doesn't apply to Omaha. Newsflash, newsflash, Omaha has to comply with state law. This is another example. As he said, of corporate Pete and the queen of the third floor thumbing their noses at state government. Hey, what can I say? Um, so that's gonna be item forty. However, because they have it into that consent agenda and last week was public hearing and they had all that, like I said, I don't foresee anybody pulling it out. And if they do, it will still pass. So let's move along. Another consent agenda, and these are resolutions. Um, liquor license, number forty one, nah. Manager, Texas Roadhouse, um, concrete speed bumps. Um, change order. Nope, nope. Professional services, no, no. Applications for the lease of city property adjacent, no. Forty six, no. Forty seven, no. And um, nope. And forty nine, or forty seven, I'm sorry. Forty nine I wanted to talk about, so I was kinda itching and moving to get to that forty nine. Um, an ordinance to grant a permanent right of way of land. Here you go. On the final reading, the vote is today along the city property line. And you know, anything is gonna be doing with the Eppley Airfield, you know, that's a done deal. Okay. So here's what I wanted to bring up. Item forty nine, this is a resolution for the appointment by Mayor Gene Stothard of Todd Sir, Sir Rexey, and I apologize for messing your name up, Todd. Uh, to the Board of Directors for the Omaha Land Bank as a voting member. He will replace Donnie Freeman as the District One member. Said term to commence October tenth and will expire March sixth. Um, is hereby confirmed and approved. See attachment. Now, anything that has to do, this is one of those um resolutions that require a five council member vote. So five out of the council members have to vote for this. Public hearing and the vote today. Now, let me show you. This is what I want. This is the resume that goes along. This is public record. Okay, you have to do this. Um, here's where I find interesting. Professional experience, Nodle Company Development Company, March twenty eighteen to the current. So what does that mean? Means he's still working for the Nodle Company. Now you'll say, what's that? I don't have anything against Nodle Company. I don't have anything against Todd. What I want to do is to bring this out for people. You can't say that I didn't. This is what is happening again at the Omaha Land Bank. These little things get in. Now, look at this. Appointment by Jane, uh, request the appointment by the mayor and Nodle Company. Guess what? Hey, hey, hey. Who else on that board works for Nodle Company? Hmm. Do I have your curiosity? Well, guess what? I'm not gonna tell you. But recently, I brought up how the mayor and the Omaha Land Bank had brought on four new members in a non-voting position. Now, the point being is when I brought it up, why all of a sudden are these happening? And I was told, I asked uh, from my elected officials for District Two. And I also asked the uh Omaha Land Bank, why all of a sudden are all these? Well, their reply to me was, is that they were trying to get people on in a non-voting position so that if something happened for the voting position, then they would already be there and have experience about being on the Omaha Land Bank. Now I know, and that sounds good, okay? And I can say it's justified. But I knew that something was in the works to make this, that those non-voting members, somebody or bodies were going to become voting members. And guess what? Todd's number one, because Donnie's leaving. Now, let's look at this. Let's go to item fifty. Item fifty. Appointment by Gene Mayor, Queen Mayor Gene Stothard for Court Bonner to the Board of Directors for the Omaha Land Bank as a voting member. Mr. Bonner will replace Chris Rock, Christopher Rock, I just noted him as Chris, who has resigned as the District Five member. His term uh commence September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, and will expire June sixth, twenty twenty six. Is hereby confirmed and approved. See attached. Okay. Let's, let's pull old courts up. Now remember when uh, the queen tried to slick this one through earlier? But they had made a mistake and here he is, District, he's really from District Five. They tried to put him in District One before, but we caught it. We conversations with Cheryl Weston, we caught that. So they just put him on as the backup for District Five. Again, I have nothing against Court. I, I know the young man, think he's fantastic young man. He um, I have nothing against him. Here's my point. When they said, they're giving you folks, and I always go back and you know, and I know you've heard me say it and you probably are tired of me saying it, but I gotta say it again, when Maya Angelou said, when people tell you and they show you who they are, where they're coming from, and I'm adding a few more words to hers. Um, is believe them because that's what they are and that's who they are. And I knew something was up. Now, here we go. Now, why is it? Mr. Bonner, his will begin September twenty fourth and up here will begin October tenth. I have noticed, and there's, here's what the next problem's gonna come up, is District Two. Because District Two, we have, our representation is almost zilch. Our representatives for District Two have been MIA. I know most of you'll think MIA, missing in action, missing in attendance. So what's coming up? Now here's gonna be the interesting factor. I'm gonna see how they bring this up. Are missing MIAs for District Two voting and non-voting board members have been missing in attendance? There was no one put as a non-voting member for that area, for District Two. Okay? So who are they gonna pounce and throw up in District Two for that position? Since they're missing in action and they haven't attended meetings lately. Okay, we're gonna see, because it's coming. Now I asked, as I said, I asked, why are these uh, non-member voting members, why are they putting so many in the non-voting members? And they said, because of the need when this happens and they have representatives who have to resign from the board member, board positions, they will have somebody on. I also asked, okay, then why don't you have some backup in District Two? Well, no one applies. There's no interest shown. That's a bunch of baloney, because I know for myself, I applied. But they already had that position set aside for someone else. So I know I'm in there and I'm definitely interested, I'm definitely qualified. And if I have to pat myself on the back, I will, because I know I'm qualified. I know that I can fill that position. But do you think that Queen Mayor's gonna put me in? No way. But there's coming, let me tell you, it's coming. Um, District Two non-voting member is City Councilwoman Juanita Johnson. And then uh, District Two representative for voting is Ms. Charlon Rogers, who has become the director for Seventy Five North, who has not attended for three board meetings. Now, something's in the work. And let me tell you, folks, and you can go to the uh, Omaha Municipal Land Bank's website and see the meetings, because they're virtual and you can see what it is. You really need to go and see last month's meeting, because, oh, it was a shocker to some of the board members. And I said some, not all, because I know there were several in board members. Let me back that up. I can't say I know for sure, but I would be ninety nine percent, I would bet that I know several of those board members, voting and non-voting, I know they knew that uh, Donnie was leaving and that Court was gonna move into disposition as voting. I know they did. As I said, I will bet on it and I don't like to bet, because I don't like to lose money. But I'm gonna bet you. There were several. But if you would have seen the face of some of the board members who didn't know, and you, be your own judge, it's right at the end, towards the end of the board meeting. So you don't, you can skip all that other bull crap before and go towards the end and check it out. But if you could have seen the face of those board members when it was announced that Donnie would be leaving, and they didn't even mention the Chris Rock resignation. Because they're putting it here in the uh, city council vote for Tuesday, the twenty fourth. It was so funny. I, I'm like, I need to go back, pull that video up and capture that, because you could tell. They, those that weren't in the in-crowd of the board and doing all the backdoor stuff, they didn't know it. And so this is what's happening. So those are two that I'm looking forward to, forty nine and fifty. As I said, they'll pass, so it's okay. I know they are, but I wanted to bring it to people. Um, then we have item fifty one, and there is an attachment in opposition. Let's click it in. Here again, aw, come on, Rick. Here's Rick doing his thing. Dear Omaha City Council, when you vote today on the ordinance to lower the occupation tax levy against telephone companies by the city, remember this change cost Omaha over three point five million in just one year? But you know, city of Omaha doesn't care about the budgets, because who pays for it? You and I and all the others, taxpayer. Everything, they, they spend the money and who, who has to foot the bills of everything? Omaha taxpayers. What I heard about the discussion in Lincoln over L B ten twenty three was that it flew under the radar for the Omaha Senators and the new lobbying firm that was just hired last year at great expense. What did I say last year when I was telling, talking about this? Two hundred thousand dollars in an increase every year for five years? Hey. And here, what's happened? They fell down on the job by not notifying lobbying the legislature on this bill. They didn't even do, because they weren't aware. And this is what I was saying, we're paying money when we had our in-house lobbyists, we didn't run into this problem. But nope. They kicked term out. Queen Mayor said, mm-mm, I'm relieving you, Jack, of your lobbying duties that you did for twenty nine years and hired her Republican friend's law firm to lobby. That was the Kelly Pluck. I kindly asked the council at the time to not take this action, but of course, you ignored me, Rick says. Now the city will be out of at least three million in a year. No big deal, right? The way the city spends, probably not a big deal to this administration. Now I want to repeat, no big deal, oops, whoop, no big deal to this administration. So what's Rick saying to you, folks? We, the people that these city council and this mayor is supposed to be working for, we have to get up and say stuff, we have to make a decision, we have to vote. And when it comes next year for vote, we need to be there to say enough is enough. The bad thing about this episode is that nobody will suffer any consequences for this lame brain ideal. Another streetcar, another fifty-story building. The power-hungry mayor will go on doing whatever she wants and the council, he says, and the council, and I said, and the approving council will continue to act like lemmes, following the mayor over the cliff and failing to represent their constituents. So Rick is just saying the same thing and I said, we have to be, if we want a change for our city, we have to be thinking about next year's election. I know we're all wrapped up in the national, but we need to start thinking about what's happening in the local, because that's what affects us each and every day. Our taxes are the ones that's going up. Our taxes are the highest ones practically in the country. All right, so that, it will pass tomorrow. Because they don't listen to Rick anyway. But you know, one of the things that Rick and I have in common, at least we can say, um, we did speak up, we did bring attention to it, and we have it in public record. What the count, what the city and the members, uh, or, or not city, when people who live in the city vote, they can make a difference. Um, city council will not meet on October fifteenth. These are items that will be appearing as the second reading um, on the September twenty fourth. Public hearing will vote October first. Um, these are just Camelot Village over there, Platt, um, Saddle Creek. Those will be voted on. Okay, Southwest Farnham Street, those, that's public hearing. October first, it's a done deal. There's nothing gonna change over there, except the only thing that might change is it might come in and ask for some more money and that'll happen. Um, item fifty six, Planning Department recommended approval. Oh, fifty seven, fifty eight. Nope. Saddle Creek, all that's gonna be the same, nothing. Um, Key Wet Division replaced, nothing. It's just a reading. Uh, public vote, all this will be on public vote next week. And that's a done deal. Um, twenty seven, all that's a done deal, done deal. Wha- why am I saying that's a done deal? When heck, everything on the city council agenda practically is a done deal. Ah, so I'm giving you your laugh for today. Um, keep it, keep it. Okay, okay. Um, so pretty much everything, like I said, these are all coming up. The only thing, folks, you need to look at some of these to see, is there anything that brings to your attention that you might want to be um, in the know and plan to attend the public hearing when it comes up? Um, TIF two two two, South Fifteenth and South Sixteenth Street. Um, redevelopment site into uh approximately seven hundred and seven new apartments, approximately, um, look at this. City participation through the allocation of TIF in the amount of twenty six million dollars, four hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. Twenty two two two, South Fifteenth and two oh one, South Sixteenth Street. So those are the Twin Tower deals here. Central Plaza, isn't that something, that money that's going into there? You can check this out on, see any attachments. You can check this out, um, see any attachments. So that's pretty much it, folks, for City Council. Agenda items on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Um, I hope that, uh, this has been an enlightenment to you and perhaps that you will take. And, um, oops, we got too, too fast, too fast, um. Okay. There we go. Um, I hope that it's been helpful to you to make decisions. We just need to become more involved in what's happening in our city and we need to be really concerned. So that as soon as these elections are over come, uh, November, we need to start preparing. To make changes in our city for our upcoming, because otherwise, we're going to get. Big corporate, just keep taking us down the road. So have a great evening and again, thank you, thank you for tuning in. And if you like, hit the like button and subscribe to Conversations with Cheryl Weston on YouTube. And don't forget, people, you don't have to worry about, if you subscribe, no one's gonna know it. But it helps me and it helps our program, um, we're trying to get to, uh, a number. Um, so we wanna get as many people to subscribe as possible. That will be able to help us to secure, um, some ads on our YouTube channel. So again, if you hit the like button and the subscribe button, we'll see you next time. Bye, have a good one.